Good evening, everyone. Welcome to, I'm Paul Ruozzi, Chairman of the Norton Republican Town Committee, and welcome to Focus on Norton series where we continue to invite guest speakers charged with serving our community to come and tell their story. It is our goal to create a Norton community of informed citizens. We will be meeting again next month, April 8th, and our guest speaker will be Norton Fire Chief Shawn Simmons. Let me introduce our guest speaker, Alec Rich III. He is a Norton native, current Norton Select Board member, businessman in town with a long family history in serving the town. His 28-year business background includes waste management, real estate, property management. He will give us a brief history of his family in Norton, his 28-plus-year business background, and what he has learned the past year, which I'm sure is much, serving the town of Norton residents as a selectman. I have found Alex takes a common sense approach to business, government, and all that he does. Welcome, Alex the Fool.
Thank you, Mr. Ruozzi. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I would first like to recognize our state rep, Jay Barrows, and thank him for his almost 17 years of service. You're going to be retiring from it in November?
I wouldn't call it that, quite frankly, but I'm too young to retire.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
So, I'm Alec Rich III. I'm a current Norton Select Board member, and my background, as Mr. Ruozzi mentioned, is 28 years of waste management companies, build, buy, consolidate, spin off, I've sold a few of them, and solid air and liquid waste. And that's allowed me to be able to realize a lot of situations where you have a lot of components and pieces to put together, and some of them don't want to go together easy. And you have to get creative and think out of the box and make stuff happen. And that's where I shine. And it's been a long road and a fun road, and a lot of people that have worked for me over the years and still work for me, we've had a lot of fun, grown a lot together. And that's part of the business stuff. My schooling was Coyle Cassidy High School, and then Bridgewater State. I have a, I think, a Management Science, they called it, degree back then, specialized in accounting. I also have a sociology degree with criminology background. So, I'm married to my wife, my beautiful wife Diane, and we have four kids together. My oldest son runs the companies that we own. He does all the day-to-day, and we have a lot of fun with it. It's very nice having a small family business. As some of you do know, there's nothing quite like it. It's a lot higher purpose when your kids are involved, setting their path forward. And they all have gone to Norton schools and still in Norton schools. My youngest is a freshman at Norton High, and then Alec IV, he is a senior this year, captain of the baseball team. And I think some people, they remember my grandfather. He was a permanent fixture in town, welder, blacksmith. We worked with him a lot when I was younger, fixing the town common fence, which if anybody's been to the Common Sense about 2:00 a.m. Saturday morning, they notice someone went through the fence again. So, I plan on, my father and myself were taking over those duties of fixing that for the town, so plan on doing that as soon as we can. And also the Unitarian Church across the street, we've done that forever, since I was a little kid. And I take a lot of pride in that, and it breaks my heart that that common fence is the way it is right now, but we're going to try and get on that as soon as we can. And of course, all of you, I think everybody knows or remembers my cousin Bochi, and my uncle Clarence, and cousin Zeb, they were very heavily involved, serving the town of Norton, and Zeb also even further with Bristol County Sheriff's Department, post office. And so, I have big shoes to fill in that regard. And my cousin Zeb also, he was a big part of creating the Newland Street Cemetery, which he took great, very great pride in. My uncle Danny and my father, I think a lot of people do know, they started the Quick Stop way back when, before, right after 495 was, or as 495 was being constructed, I should say. It started in a little shack that they moved that was in the pathway of where the highway was going. So, they bought a sand pit that wasn't worth much more than the sand that was there, and they put that store there. And the rest is there. The rest is there for, to see, the Quick Stop has evolved into a lot bigger operation now. And then, of course, my cousin Barbara and her husband Vinny, they owned a hot dog stand. That was a, I think, most people remember that as well. That was a staple in town. And then, of course, my cousin Janet. I think everybody knows Janet. She walks frequently in town, every morning, like clockwork, and everybody knows when you're talking to Janet, for sure. So, as what I have learned, as Mr. Ruozzi mentioned, one thing I have learned is there's a lot to learn, and I absolutely love it. It is challenging. There is a lot of human resource orchestrating that goes on, which is all good, but learning the dynamics. And municipal is the same but different from private business. You still have to have the strong, good relationships with everybody. It just, the flow chart of how things work, that took a little bit of getting used to, but there were a lot of people, the town hall, we are blessed to have an incredible workforce in that town hall right now. There are some really good people there that their heart is with the town of Norton. They're not there for the check. They're there because they love this town, and that is, it's just wonderful, because they take a lot of pride in it. And with the new town hall being built now, that is a long time coming. From what they're working in now, it's going to be extremely beneficial for a better flow of work. It's going to be a lot more productive, just if you know what we have now, you'd understand if you've been in the town hall. It's definitely overdue, but it's coming along very nicely. Mr. Slattery is doing a great job overseeing that, as well as our new senior in community center, which that's moving right along as well, and that hopefully will be open by the end of summer, early spring, early fall. And everybody is anxious for that to be open, even that much more. That's going to be, we were lucky enough to tour that several months back, and it is, I mean, you can fit the existing senior center in one of the rooms in that building. And some of the events that I have been at the existing senior center, it is, I mean, Beth, Beth, our director, she's wonderful, she does, she does a great job running everything, scheduling, dealing with the people, she doesn't stop. She must wear on a pair of sneakers in a month. She just does not stop, and we're very lucky to have her handling that, so I can't wait to help her get fully moved into that new center. So, with that, I've been, you know, as a selectman, I've also been, I've been tasked with being, I guess, voted on the capital improvement committee, which I think most people know that is, comes up during budget time, when there are capital expenses such as, you know, a new fire truck, or new police cars, or things of that nature that the department needs, that funding doesn't come from their regular operating budget. And we have to prioritize some of the requests. Right now, it's a little bit difficult time because the, we don't have as much revenues as we would like. They've drastically diminished, and they're projected to diminish even more with talking with Senator Feeney. The state overall is having a little bit of a revenue problem, but Norton's going to do what we do best, and we unify, and we can do more with less. It just is what it is. We got to make it work, and luckily, we have the people to do it. So, that committee, also I'm a member of the Veterans Council, which I take great pride in. A lot of my family members are veterans, and there's one of my family members on every memorial in town. And like I said, I take extreme pride in that. We have a great group of people on that council. Bob Kimball, he does a lot with the Gold Star Committee as well. And Roger Masaun, who is currently running for another Select Board seat that's open, do a lot of stuff. We have a carnival in the summer, this past year was the first carnival that the council had, and it was extremely successful. And that, we've put a lot of that money to use to needy veterans and needy families that, in their time of need, we were able to support them. And anyone that's done stuff like that, it's quite a feeling of pride, being able to do that for people that find themselves in a situation where that little bit of help goes a long way. And I couldn't be more proud to be part of that. So, I also, my colleague Steve Hornsby, another Select Board member, he's a member of the Traffic Study Committee, but I've, and he's our Select Board liaison to that committee. But I've also joined in a lot on that, because there are some heavy lifts on that committee, and one of them being the center of town, straightening out that intersection. And that, Bob Kimball, leading the charge, he's the chair of that committee, and they've been able to get Serpide to do, you know, free of charge, to do some conceptual plans to show that, straightening out of that intersection, which is 50 years overdue, Jay, maybe, somewhere in there?
Somewhere, 60.
For whatever reason, it never materialized, whether it be money, this, that, whatever it is, but I think it's time, we have some money, hopefully, from town meeting to be able to get the engineering done. How it works with the state, Jay, as you know, the town is responsible for getting the engineering done. Serpide does the draft plans. We need to figure out what might be best. We got to get the engineering done. And then, once that's decided with us, Serpide, and the state, the final design, then the state will cover full cost of the construction of it. So, I think it's time we stop kicking that can down the road, because that is, I think, one of the, one of the most, besides budgets, one of the most talked about issues in town. And I remember my grandfather saying, talking about it 30 years ago, and it's just way long overdue. So, that's something that I plan on staying on top of, no matter what. Like I said, it's, we just can't kick that can down the road anymore. There's, the traffic just backs up way too much. It's way overdue. And we have several viable options. And on top of that, Wheaton, who Mr. Ruozzi and other members have established a strong line of communication with, they're at the table with us on that, to be players in that. And they have a lot of land in that area, and that's a major component of it. And they are definitely interested in being at the table with us for final design and layout, which could take, it's going to take a lot more years, but it's definitely, like I said, long overdue, and hopefully, that comes to fruition sooner than later. Also, I've been appointed to the GATRA Advisory Board, and the biggest thing with that, that recently transpired, which I'm sure, Jay, you know, is we had Sunday service was just initiated, started a month ago, somewhere in there. So, that's good. GATRA, also, I am appointed to the Hazard Mitigation Committee, which that committee has been tasked with, with the help of another engineer, finding trouble spots, so to speak, in town with natural disasters, whether it be heavy rainstorms, wind, fire, floods, and things of that nature. Where are most susceptible areas to damage, to, you know, issues? Luckily, our fire chief, Shawn Simmons, he's the chair of that, and he is on it. He's incredible with it. Him and John, John Norris, our conservation agent, as well as the stormwater management, John is a big component of that as well. So, that, hopefully, we identify those areas, there's a pathway moving forward. We had a meeting last week, and the pathway moving forward with identifying those potential issues during natural disasters is how do we, oh, we prioritize, and then we receive funding from the state who grants. Is that right, Jay? Is that correct?
Yeah, just trying to mitigate the exposures.
Yep, that's right. That's right. So, that's, you know, I guess the elephant in the room is the budget. You know, we have a smaller pie to take from, you know, this year, this upcoming fiscal year, and possibly next year. Hopefully, you know, it's not, it's not as bad as we think, but, you know, the reality of it is, it is what it is. We have to deal with it, and we have to prioritize, we have to bucket stuff. I've had a lot of meetings with a lot of department heads, just trying to feel them out, what's the, we're going to bucket these in needs and wants. The needs are the needs. You know, the wants, we have to really analyze and do a cost benefit, you know? We got to do ROIs on every dollar spent, and see what's the most effective use of every dollar that we have to get through this. You know, luckily, in business, this economy, it's a little bit different than a couple other downturns that I've chartered my companies through. They're all a little bit different in some way, shape, or form, but you have to make, you have to have tough conversations, you have to make tough decisions, but in the end, you got to do it, and you got to get through it. And I think we have a, I mean, I couldn't be more proud of the team in town, all our department heads, you know, top-down, Mike Units, all the department heads, Jen O'Neil, our new school superintendent, I love her to death. She's doing a great job with what she can do. You know, we're very hopeful that with, you know, teamwork, this, you know, I'm hoping next year's going to be the rebuilding year. This year's going to be tough. It is what it is, but we have to buckle down and get through it, and I think next year's going to be a rebuilding year for us. We have to, we have to do more with less, and that's point-blank. That's what it is. Creative budgeting, you know, when, I think everybody, when they were young and they were starting out, whether you owned a business or, you know, your first rent payment, whatever it was, your first mortgage, you just, you figure it out, you find a way, and there's something to be said for that. And when your back's against the wall, that's when you can do your best creative financing that you have to do. You find ways. And like I said, this, I have a lot of faith in our team, the Select Board, all the committees, all the department heads in the full departments. There's a lot of very intelligent, capable people in this town, and I have no doubt that we are going to come out a lot better after this. You always come out stronger, always come out stronger. And I guess, you know, with all that being said, that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions?
No pennies from heaven, huh?
Pardon?
No pennies from heaven.
No, I wish we had a money tree at the, you know, the, I'm back at the schools or, you know, the town hall, but it is what it is. That's it? Yes, sir?
For those who are not up on current events, and maybe those who are watching on television, could you elaborate a little bit more on why the revenue's going down, or what sources are actually going down, and why?
So, funding from the state has dropped drastically, because their revenues have dropped drastically.
Yeah, we've had eight consecutive months of lower revenue. And one of the things that surprised me, but not really, I think we were all oversold on the millionaire's tax, when you add 4% to any amount over a million dollars. And when they were advertising, you know, the teachers' unions and other, you know, entities were advertising, they said, $2 billion we were going to raise, and...
They were kidding themselves.
Somebody was kidding somebody, because we're not even close. So, that's way down. And then, you take, again, what we're spending, we're just crowding out other funding, a billion dollars on the migrant issue.
A year?
Yeah. So, we spent a billion, the last fiscal year, we just, we're at 980 billion, I mean, it's, or 980 million, excuse me. And that's just the tip of the iceberg, because of the influx of both people and people who qualify immediately for mass health, and so there's some pent-up to me in there. So, that's crowding out some other funding. And then, the COVID money that we got from the federal government that we really didn't have, at the federal level to give away, we supercharged that investment. So, that's not coming in anymore. And we still have a little bit of county money left, I think Norton still has some that they've allocated, not much, you know? So, just a lot of, it's, we knew it was going to happen, I mean, but I don't think we were prepared to battle, you know, and I can't stress enough, the migrant issue, when you are trying to solve problems with just money, without solutions, no bid contracts on food, we're covering $64 a day per person. We don't, there's no kidding in you.
There's no bid there, Jay?
No bid, no bid on that. Now, we just passed an amendment to their supplemental budget last Wednesday to require a bid, but it hasn't gone through the Senate, the governor hasn't signed it. And, you know, we talked to the Worcester Food Bank and said, what could you feed a person, you know, someone that's not medically fragile or, you know, needed to design a meal? And they said it was $12.24 a day, and we're spending $64. It just doesn't make sense. And so, then, when your revenue goes up from the state, if we can get it to go up at all, $40,000, $50,000, it's nothing, so it's a challenge. It's a challenge, and we're doing the best we can, but I think there's some areas that we could really use some help.
So, just as a follow-up question, how much is it going down that we're anticipating, roughly?
It's going to be in the millions.
That our share of the state revenues that would normally be coming in?
Right, Jay?
Yeah, it's really hard to put a number on it just yet, but I'm anticipating that we're not going to, in the years past, we were able to fully fund some of the new provisions with schools. I don't know if we're going to be able to get completely there, but our revenues dropped 6%, 7%, which is a lot.
And it's not just this year, but it's going to be by the time this shakes out. It's, this is a multi-year thing.
Right.
That's the reality of it. It's a multi-year thing, and it's going to be in the millions. It just is what it is. Yes, sir?
Through you, Tim, through you, Jim.
Sure, yes.
Representative, is Mansfield in the same kind of, you're our sister city.
Yep.
Same kind of crunch, or maybe bigger, smaller, medium, but is it the same crunch that we're feeling that you have in Mansfield?
Maybe not as much, because we did have more growth, you know, in the, we brought some new businesses on, but, you know, revenue that you would normally get from the hotel, that's dried up, revenue that we would get, you know, some of these things have dried up. We're not seeing new car sales as much, so the excise tax, right? That stuff, you know, during the COVID, when people had money, they were just, you couldn't find a car to buy, right? Now, there's, can't find one not to. So, that's dropped out. So, you know, meals tax, that we all catch a little bit of, I mean, some of that stuff is just not zoomed up. What I don't understand, though, is we're still, we're losing people out of Massachusetts. That's a fact, that people leave in the state. So, migration out, we still have one of the lowest unemployment rates, we have one of the highest minimum wage rates, and it's just, it's kind of like, where's the tax revenue going, or not, right?
It's a compounding effect, year over year.
So, Jay, the foundation of these problems had something to do with that instant COVID money, and they used it as a way of ignoring all of these...
Some communities used it to fill positions, and it wasn't, you know, I mean, if you can fill a position, and we've been caught in this...
Instead of the everyday fund, they were using it.
Right. The feds have tried it a couple times, you fill four firemen positions with grant money. Well, it lasts two or three years, and then that's gone, and now, you know, we need the staff, so now the town's faced with, so those are some of the games that can be played, but at the same time, you know, I think, again, we'll come out of it, but we need to write some. I really thought during COVID initially, because it was a little bit of a scary and great uncertainty, that we would have done a reset at that point, but then the floodgates opened, and the money just flew in to both locally, the state, the counties, it was just education, I mean, it was unbelievable.
That got baked into budgets.
Right.
You know, I'm surprised FASB hasn't been all over this, because it got baked into operating expenses instead of just capitalized.
Right. So, and each town is different, the way they, you know, chose to do it. I mean, I think we have some future opportunity. We were very fortunate to get the development on 123, we've got some more land coming on that the state, I don't know why the state's been dragging their feet, you know, on the same side of the road as the Quick Stop, where that intersection is already done, the sewer's already in, the infrastructure's there, 16 acres will protect Canoe River down in the back, great spot, frontage on 495, I mean, it's just, it's primo. So, and the town's done all the hard work of rezoning, making sure that it was set...
Jay, the developer of that... Jay, the developer of that orthopedic place and now a restaurant in Maroma Joe's, is he a local business? He's done an excellent job. He's got another parcel he hasn't quite developed. Seems like nice work. And that was an eyesore that, when I came to Norton, I said, what was that?
Oh, the soccer bubble? Is that Coppi and Otto? Is that Coppi and Otto?
Well, he's now, they're going to put another hotel in.
Yeah. But the developer, is that Coppi and Otto out of Rhode Island?
Greg Dowling.
Greg Dowling?
Yeah.
Yeah, they took a good jump?
Because it wasn't ice, it wasn't an old.
It was an old soccer bubble.
Yeah. And it burned.
I think it just.
It filled out a couple of times. If you had your shorts on that deal, someday we'll talk.
Yeah. That was in the eighties, Jay?
Yeah.
Nineteen ninety-nine, the April first blizzard of nineteen ninety-nine was the last.
The heat went out and the snow piled up.
That was the end of that.
Because when you come into a town or an area, those are the things you see at first.
Oh, exactly.
Like a dilapidated rest area in your town, even though it's on the highway. Come on, you know?
But look what's happened on 140. You know, again, Mansfield, and I've often said this, I believe it. What's good for Norton is good for Mansfield and Foxborough and vice versa. You know, it's, it's, it's a big chessboard, right? And so what happens in one section, it certainly helps another. The partnerships that we've formed with Wheaton College and the Mansfield Bio up in the old Glass Factory on Maple Street, phenomenal. And you know, who knows what we're going to invent or discover? You know, so these relationships, Bridgewater, you know, kind of pulling this whole thing together, this, this region. So we'll get like an island. That was an amazing score, right?
Home run.
We got a lot of money and we're able to do a lot of things with it. But that too, that's a one, a wanting it with building permits and so forth. And now you have settled down and say, okay, here's the tax revenue that's going to come in. They're doing phenomenal. And I think another opportunity, maybe to get somebody else in that, that line of work, that business, and we can establish ourselves.
Should draw more, yeah. And then we feed off each other.
You get Smith and Nephew in Mansfield, you got some really high-tech companies that are doing some really, really good things. So, you know, we're going to draw on that as a region. You know, the transportation hub that we have in Mansfield, the Blue Apple Bus that we need to do something with GATRA here in Norton to tie that parking lot by the now senior center to have transportation back and forth so people can, can use that bus. It's sixteen dollars a ride into Boston.
Yeah, you can't beat it.
You know, you can't, yeah.
Alex, would you say that there are people coming through that door at Town Hall that want to do business here? I mean,
Yeah, there are.
Kind of atmosphere, you know, good business.
Yeah.
You know, because we don't want to lose that.
No.
And we've got another golf tournament coming in, the LPGA to TPC. And so when you get these corporate, you know, they set up their little things and they get to know their way around a bit.
That was wonderful when they were doing that annually. And they cut back a little bit, but.
We'll get it back. We're going to get it back.
I hope so. That was a very low impact from a transportation standpoint.
Right.
But a very high impact to businesses in town.
Right.
It's right in my backyard, and I wander on that course, they are still taking care of it. It's amazing. They have not let it go on.
Oh, no.
PGA still cares.
Police and fire and everybody that was involved in that, the lead up to setting that up. I mean, that, that was, that's great for the town.
Make sure that PGA, boy, because it started here. So he's got a little, a little spot in his heart. So he'll be back. He'll be back. I'm pretty sure of that.
I hope so. It's a great event.
I think Norton's poised, again, to get through this next couple of years and show that we can do it. And show the business community and the residents that we can do it. And then you will attract more businesses because of the, not this one-hit wonder. You know, with things going up and down, but just staying steady, and that's how Norton has done so well. And presenting the business community and residents a very competitive tax rate.
It, it, very competitive, and it needs to stay that way. If we go up in that, that's a, that's a determining factor. I know firsthand companies that, that one of the first things they look at, they don't, they, not just labor force, it's what's the tax rate? That's every, that's.
How stable is the community?
Yep, that, that's taken day in, day out.
And Wheaton has been on focus
Yep.
on Norton. And we learned from that video and the new president, superintendent, president of Wheaton that they've started the medical nursing course. Which, when you just, when you step back and go, now there's an opening.
Yep.
Right, we got forty-five students, I think in this September, if I'm not mistaken.
Takes a while to grow the number.
We gotta hang in there for five years. You gotta demonstrate to the state that you can do this.
Yeah.
And then out they go, and that will grow. And we've got opportunity down on Elm Street for some development there. And again, we're going to need places for these students to live. You're keeping them for five years. That's not a bad deal.
Wheaton's been great, so, you know, if, if, hopefully they do make that phone call for that land.
Don't forget they got issues themselves as colleges to survive in and so forth.
Well, they, they did realize a drop in enrollment several years back.
They lost a foreign student connection.
And then they, they've, they've adjusted some of the majors, some of the, some of the programs. One of them being the nursing. They added criminal justice. And they also, didn't they, they had a business program, but they fortified that. They built that up.
We had a gentleman from Wheaton that runs the business unit come speak to the, at the annual chamber, Triton Chamber of Commerce. Meeting was brilliant. And talking about artificial intelligence and what the kids are working on and doing and learning. So again, that is important to our area, to our region. And I know, you know, sometimes people get, oh, they don't pay taxes or this, that. They do. There's a lot, there's a lot going on.
They don't pay taxes on the buildings that are used for education. They pay taxes on all the other structures.
Exactly. So big tax.
She told me in my person, the president, that that newest building they built, that was going to be it for a while. Because it was a huge, you know, the new one there with.
Yeah.
And she said, you won't see us building a lot of mortar and brick, but we're going to grow the, like, starting programs and attracting more students.
They're doing it. They're doing it. And they're going to, that's, that's going to bring the need for more.
Alex, I'd like to shift gears and just, on economics, and wanted to throw a question at you because every time I'm with you, you always talk about kids and sports and the youth. What advice would you give the kids, not only in Norton, but across the board to succeed in this challenging world today? Have any thoughts?
Stay involved in sports, whatever it is.
Yeah.
There's, I mean, everything, I almost run my businesses. It's almost like a continuous baseball game. Sometimes you don't, you don't get any runs at inning, next inning make them up. You know, you have the opportunity, offense and defense. And there's so many similarities with, you know, situational similarities. You got to think quick. You got to be able to move. And I've been coaching for eighteen years. And, you know, more with less. You, I've had the Bad News Bears at the beginning of a season go oh and ten. And then we end up taking the championship. You start figuring out your resources that you have and work to their strengths. And then you end up taking the whole league. Back to back years and, and, you know, you end up, you get, it's, it's the same process in business. You got to, you got to keep the team together. And, you know, you're only as strong as your weakest link. But sports, in my personal opinion, I have a huge affinity to sports, especially baseball. And like Roger Ma saying here, he was an umpire for years when he was coaching way back.
And you talk about this word versatility. I mean, look at yourself, those college degrees. Has anyone really asked you about them? You know, you have to have today a lot of versatility. If you're a homeowner and you're a father and you got a four-year degree, you better learn how to do some things around the house.
Well, I mean, yeah, I, I was lucky enough to be brought up. You know, my, my father
I'm just trying to say.
And my grandfather, my uncle's very industrious kind of guys. You know, they didn't have anything, so you kind of sink that. When you don't have, you got to figure it out. And it, it, I was lucky enough to grow up around that. My father worked pretty much seven days a week. You know, my mother, you know, same thing, whatever, whatever, all for one, one for all. You know, teamwork, baseball, business. And it's, it's not a hard philosophy. It's actually as, as easy as it gets. You just got to, you got to get up every day and get after it. You know, you can't, to your question about the kids, you know, stay in sports and don't expect anything to be handed to you. Get up and go get it. And it's all out there. You just got to go get it. So, yes, sir?
Would you, will the finance committee, will the other committees that move money around and make the town function properly? And then it's dumped on you for the final vote to go to town meeting? Do you see this upcoming year, as we go to town meeting, is the money there?
We don't have any final numbers yet. I don't even think our town manager has the final numbers yet. We will be, you know, briefed when the time comes. There's a FinCon meeting going on as we speak right now. So those, we just don't know yet. The projection is, no, there's going to be some sort of shortfall. We don't know what that number looks like. We can only guess. But, you know, Denise Luciano, who's also a member of the Select Board, she made, you know, she had asked Mike to put that stuff together for us, you know, so we can make an educated.
And all the project heads are on notice, you know?
Everybody knows. Everybody knows. And not whatever, you know, anybody that's looking for, you know, Capital Improvement Committee, they've all, they've all come before us. And, you know, we know what it is. But like I said, we, we have to put buckets, you know, needs and wants, and then prioritize. Needs ain't wants. Because sometimes the needs can be cheap and the wants can be very expensive. So, or vice versa. And it's, it's a balance in that, you know? Mike does, the town manager does most of that before it gets to us. But, you know, as a capital improvement committee, we need to know what we, what we have to work with as well. So, and we don't have any of those final numbers yet. Yes, sir?
Is there a two and a half override on the horizon coming?
I think so.
From schools or from the town or what?
I think, you know, don't, don't quote me. There's been, there's been talks about it. There's been talks about it. I, you know, I don't know. You know, we'll see. I think tonight's going to be another big meeting.
Sometimes it puts some huge overrides together. Huge. And I just don't see how that's going to work.
You know, the pie is only so big. You know, we're, I, I hear every day from people that they're, they're on fixed incomes. And we just cannot keep putting this on the back of people with fixed incomes. You know, it, it just can't happen. We have to live within our means. Not level funding, you know, level, I mean, we have to, I got to be careful what I say. I, I think there's a way to do it, but there's give and take too. We, I think everybody needs a haircut this year. Let me put it that way. There needs to be a haircut this year, period. So we're not putting people out of there. It's, it's a real factor right now.
Well, you're dealing with, you know, the last three years of inflation. You hear different statistics, how much more it's costing us all to live. And that's before you hit the tax button.
Another compounding effect. You know, all these compounding effects. We're in a perfect storm of expenses now.
Right. And that's, family budgets have had to be adjusted and things, you know, it's just a fact of life. So whether it's fixed income or you're out banging nails every day, you know, there's only so many nails you can bang. Right? So then you got to make some decisions. But we're all kind of in the same boat. And we're all, the budget process that the state will start in three more weeks. So we'll see what comes out of that. Then the Senate gets it and the governor gets it.
And that's the other thing. We're setting a budget before we even know what we're getting from the state, you know? And, you know, it's.
We won't get the budget done in July, just a full warning.
You know, so, and we're, we're.
If I could have done it in July, whatever.
We're going off of numbers that, that could be, could be changed still, even in some. You know, it's, it's just the hard reality. Yes, sir?
I'm sorry to keep on dominating this, but first of all, I wanted to thank you. And I want to thank you too, Jay. I mean, the two of you, I think, are doing a great job. Your can-do, your can-do attitude is incredible. And as is all of the department heads as well, they're, you know, they're willing to do whatever it takes, you know, to get the job done. But as a taxpayer, I'm furious that the reason why you have to be put in this position is because of problems like flawed legislation, like that millionaire tax. That was a huge mistake. I saw that coming before it happened, and so did a lot of other people. Now we're finding out, you know, what impact it has. And then, you know, this whole migrant thing is being swept under the rug. And we, I think our taxpayers need to know what effect the amount of revenue that we're going to be, that we aren't going to be receiving, how much of it is due to some of these factors. We need to, we need to educate, I think, our taxpayers on things like that. It shouldn't all fall on your shoulders to solve the problem. I mean, the taxpayers, I think, have to understand. They should be furious.
Oh, absolutely. But, you know, thank you, number one. But luckily, you know, it's not just on me. We have a huge, you know, huge rolodex of people that we can call on for support. You know, Jay, Steve Howard, Paul Feeney, Archin Claus. At least get some sort of answers, whatever we possibly can get for guidance, you know, because a hundred percent.
Let's just make sure everyone's educated and they know, and they know what's causing this and what impact it's having on their pocketbook.
Yep, and it's still, it's a, it's a, it's still a, you know, the goalposts keep changing. We just don't know yet. We're in the middle of budget season. We don't know yet. Which, I, I, I'm not a last-minute kind of guy. And I just, I, I didn't know the actual full budget type chronological order. And I don't think any business could even stay in business for more than a year with this type of, I mean, it blows my mind. I don't, I don't, I just, I don't even know how to explain it.
All the experts that we had a year ago, a year and three months ago, you know, with all their knowledge predicted X number of dollars in revenue. You know, consensus revenue for the state of Massachusetts. They completely missed it. And we had talked about a recession, soft landing, whatever, whatever it was. And our inflation has gone to the moon on states, local, you know, everything costs more.
Everything.
You know, so that caught us. And then the lack of revenue from the taxes that we were promised that was going to help us make these investments. The MBTA is just mind-boggling. I went, I was, went a couple of weeks ago into Boston, left at four thirty at night, took the train out of, out of Mansfield to Boston, bought my ticket. Nobody ever checked it on the way in. And there was probably fifty of us that got on in Mansfield. And Warren Sharon and Warren Canton and 128, they weren't checking tickets. And then the way home, I said, well, sure, they're going to check along the way home. Nope.
Is that Keolis, the operator of it?
And I think there was a little bit of a labor dispute going on as I could do a little digging. But come on. You know, that, that, just the Mansfield stop alone, fifty people, that's five hundred bucks. And last time I checked, that mattered.
When you're not being held accountable.
Right?
That's, you know, I mean, that's, that's what you got to expect if you're not being held accountable. It's amazing that it's allowed.
In conjunction with what Jim's talking about, I think the key for us locally in you, and I know your work, is keeping transparency going. Because people are going to create myths as to why this and that. And if it becomes just a, I mean, we all know they don't show up sometimes at all these town committee, Select Board meetings. Your attendance is not overwhelming either. But when the issue finally hits, they'll choose to, you know, make up their own idea or so.
Just go on Facebook.
Yeah. So, you know, at some point, and it's, I know it's going to make you, probably makes me, or if you have some kind of forum of inviting the public in, it could end up being a show and match. But transparency, some kind of way to get it done.
And that's, and that's just it. It, it, this is why I'm, you know, trying to hammer it home. You know, this, this is going to get much worse before it gets better. That's, that's the brutal reality of it. But like, like I mentioned, you know, to your, to your comment, you know, that the department heads that we have, the people that are, that are doing it, I mean, our accountant, the town accountant, James, he's one of the smartest guys. the town accountant, James, he's one of the smartest guys I've ever met. You know, I thank, I thank the Lord that we have him in there. He's a genius, and he's forgotten more than I'll ever know with accounting. And, you know, he's a blessing that, and I, I could probably count on both hands, how many people in town, how many residents actually know him?
I don't even know who he is.
He's, he's a smart guy, and he, he knows how to try and make it work. And, you know, so it's not going to be me, you know, anybody else in town here, hopefully, Roger, you know, is, is able to join and help and try and fix this, to have all this fun with us the next year, couple of years.
I'd like to be supportive of Roger.
But, you know, it, it's, it's, it is going to take the full team to do it, and everyone has to contribute. You know, we can't have these, we can't, you know, there's nothing to take, so we can't be take, take, take. It's got to be, you, you got to give some back. It, it just has to happen. I mean, by give it back, not taking any additional, that's going to be, that's, that's how it's going to work. And, you know, every department, top to bottom, like I said, all the department heads I know friends with, this, that, known for years or, or whatever, and they're smart people. We can do it, and we just need to do it together. We need to unify and do it together. There's no politics involved in this. This is brass tacks, dollars and cents, has nothing to do with politics. It just is point-blank comes to numbers, and that's it. That's how I see it. There's, there's no other way to put it. It's, there's no way to church it up or, you know, polish it up. It's just, it is what it is. But I firmly believe we have the team to do it, everybody involved, if they, if they do what I think, what I think needs to be done anyway, we're going to come out, we're going to come out of a restaurant, lean on me.
Any last questions? Thank you.
Well, thank you. I just, thank you. Thank you, sir. I'd like to give a note to Mr. Ma San. I'm hoping, I'd like to introduce Roger Ma San. He's taking out papers for the current select boards, the, yeah, the next select board seat, hopefully, but...
We'll see how things go. One point I wanted to make that when you were talking about the budget and how, it also gives us an opportunity where people who wouldn't normally work together are going to be forced to have to work together.
Yep.